Afternoon, everyone. I've got 4:50 and I wish we had a little council here, but we don't, so we're gonna go ahead and start with what we've got, the work session. Madam Clerk, could you read the role?
Yes, Ms. Cole, Mr. Getty.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Call in favor?
I am.
Most? Very good. Council, some of you are here, most of you are here, actually, I think, last Thursday morning, but the reason we're meeting today with this work session is Councilman Welper has a desire, I think, and I certainly don't wanna put words in Councilman Welper's mouth, but if I can summarize it and then kinda turn it over to you, Ron, maybe that'll be the best thing, but I think that there's a desire to take a look at that CDBG funding that has been allocated for parks and take a look at reallocating that possibly back to demolition, so you can say it much better than I can and you know what you wanna say, so I'm gonna turn it over to you, Ron, and then we'll see where we go from there.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. We'd have to go back to the mid-'90s and, of course, you remember, block grant money was pretty much open to anybody. During the hearings, we would pretty much fill the council chambers with people wanting to apply for that money. I think we would get something like $6 million in those days and we'd have like $60 million in requests, so the board decided to focus all their attention on housing, and that's pretty much where it's been for a number of years, and so the number of people coming to the hearings has pretty much dwindled. So, on the 24th of June, we approved the CDBG money. A couple days later, on the 26th, online, I'm reading that the city had received an additional $68,000. The following morning, on the 27th, I asked Rudy what the $68,000 would be used for, and Rudy said that the money would be used for rehabilitation, demolition, and Susie listened to the audio and he did say Leisure Services Project. He did not say playground equipment, so that would've caught my attention. On the 8th, when the playground equipment came up for a vote, I was going to ask Rudy about the playground equipment, and Rudy was on vacation. Now, the following morning, in a meeting which Nancy Ulrich was at, I explained I wanted to ask Rudy about the playground equipment and the money. She said the full $68,000 that we were receiving was going for playground equipment, which to me was a red flag. If we're focusing our attention on housing, we need to find a different funding source for playground equipment and stick with the demolishing of houses, and according to NOE last Thursday morning, the average demolition of a house is about $8,000, which would mean that we could probably knock down nine houses for that $68,000. So I'm asking the council to reconsider changing or returning the $68,000 towards demolition and find a new funding source for playground equipment. That's kinda the gist of it.
Okay. I'm just gonna open up, maybe, I don't know if I wanna start with Paul or with Rudy. Paul, why don't I start with you, maybe, and from your aspect, kind of how the money got allocated to parks and...
Sure. Okay.
Thanks, Mayor. Paul Heding, Leisure Services Director. I put together a timeline of all our activities related to these two projects, and I don't know if, if you want me to read through it, I'll be helping to do that.
I don't know that you need to read through every one of them, Paul, but, I mean, you've certainly given us written support. Why don't you just narrate?
Sure, I would just say, in summary, the council, on one, two, three, four occasions, unanimously approved this, so I guess I would ask, why now? After all those unanimous approvals, dating back to December 17th, 2012, the numbers exactly as approved today were submitted to you for your approval before we applied, so...
The $68,000, excuse me?
Correct. It was the 18 and 50 rate.
Okay. Was the, and I don't recall, was the funding source identified at the time that those were approved, Paul, to be CDBG money?
Yes, yes. They were brought to council specifically as block grant applications.
Okay.
So I guess to me, that was a green light, and you all voted yes, so, not you, council all voted yes. I don't think you voted that night. So, and I have a number of other items on this timeline denoting support from the neighborhood associations and the other meetings and so forth involved in this, so...
Okay.
Basically, I think we covered all our bases, and I think they're both good projects. I don't think they'll happen if we don't have this funding. There are other sources, and it just takes time to develop those, so...
Okay. Rudy, would you like to speak to it at all at this point, or kind of what's your take on it is, on the whole process?
Sure. Rudy Jones, Community Development Director. As Paul stated, we, the staff and some council members who are part of the subcommittee and our board, have gone through these funding recommendations literally four, five, six months prior to now, and we didn't think we had any objection to how, knowing full well that we were gonna get cut, and that's why we initially recommended the line items as low as we did, so when we got more money than expected, that's when we made increases to the Parks Project as well as to demolition, which actually tripled from our original request, and we added additional dollars back into our emergency repairs because we knew that those were directly assist our Loeb Mart in Com clientele, and we, in fact, have been using some block grant dollars to address the demolition problem. A list was passed out by NOE about the priority coming up with regards to demolition. We, in fact, on the numbers 11 through 20, we've already demolished four of those, already down, so, Mr. Welper, we're probably ahead of what you're asking in terms of assisting in the demolition process.
Mayor, could I just note too, today, going back through all of the different actions, I think, listening to it, there's definitely some confusion. The amount of money that was above and beyond what we were expecting to get, not necessarily what we needed, but above and beyond what we were expected, that whole amount was not given to the leisure services. We, council had already awarded $35,000 to this Parks Project and approved that, and that was already going to be funded regardless of whether they got the sixty-some thousand dollars increase. It was just increased by an additional 33 with the rest. So, when we got, the city got those additional funds, it was dispersed among many projects, one of which was leisure services, and it increased it by 33,000. It didn't increase it by 68,000.
And they had an initial ask, and they didn't get everything they requested for?
Right, they only, correct. They only funded a portion of it, but I think we, in the conversation, I hear it several times on the audio, that we were thinking that the total amount got funded out of this excess money, which really wasn't excess, it was just money we didn't think they'd give us. Only 33,000 got given to leisure, the rest of it got given to demolition and rehab and everything else.
So there was, can you put a number, a dollar number to the amount of money, the amount of CDBG funding out of this cycle that's going towards demolition? Is that on there?
With the last council approval, it went from 25,000 to 75,000.
Okay, okay.
And everybody should've gotten twice copies of the recommendation because you get the board packet, which was included, but you also got it as a part of the council approval before it's submitted to HUD.
So Rudy, in the last five years, according to what you gave us, there's been $256,000, if you add it all up, that has gone to demolition funding?
Um, yes, give or take a couple dollars.
And there could also be some demolition monies that go to when you do specific projects tied to particular development and some...
Yes, and one case would be, when we've had monies in the past through EDI, we've used that for city demolition, and the most recent case, we've used NSP dollars for demolition, and I think most of those might've been 657A structures.
Rudy, one more question. Is playground equipment in an area that has major blight, is that, and recreation equipment, is that an eligible use of these monies, or is at least what it said under the guidelines of CDBG?
Sure, sure. That's an eligible activity.
If I may, Mayor.
Sure.
This paper here that you gave us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. If you look at that, it says January 10th, 2013, Subcommittee Recommendation, $35,000. On Subcommittee, on February 13th, 2013, it says $35,000. It says, after recommendation, board recommendation, and I believe that's June 18th, I can't quite make it out, $50,000 and $18,000 for Sullivan Park. That's 68,000.
Yes, it is. What's your question?
Because you're saying we're not spending the 68,000 on these two parks, but I have it in writing that you are.
I never say we're not spending 68,000.
We got an additional allocation?
No, in April 2013, council approved 35,000 towards the parks, so that was already said and done out of the original funds. Out of the additional funds, there was an additional 33 given, so it totals 68, but it wasn't all from the excess. 35 was already allocated out of the funds we knew we were gonna receive.
So it's not coming out of the same pocket?
It is, it's just, but from that excess, they just increased the amount by 33. You had out of the original funds that had created the budget, allocated 35,000 already.
We had planned for a six-inch pie and got about a six-and-a-half inch pie, so we were able to divvy those extra dollars out a little bit further.
Where would the money have come from to do the playground project if we hadn't have gotten more than they were asking?
That would've been Paul's.
But it wouldn't have happened?
No, that would not have been our responsibility. We would've allocated what the board and council originally approved, and that's 35, and Paul and the Leisure Services Board would've been responsible for the balance.
They were gonna do Gates only and not Sullivan, and not Gates to its full.
Yeah, which, I mean, if we wouldn't have gotten the extra, Paul, and you'd have still gotten the 35,000, what would've happened?
We were going to reduce the scope of the play structure at Gates and eliminate Sullivan.
Okay.
And reapply at a later date or for different funding sources for that.
Thanks. Council, does anybody else have any comments or questions? Again, I don't wanna, I'll just wait and see. Steve?
Well, I was just gonna say, for those of us that were here Thursday morning, I think part of the conversation, too, is that, as we see every year, the funding from the federal government goes down, that we've gotta get more judicious with this, and this playground equipment is, you know, is a great project. Sullivan and Gates Park, both have been waiting for that for a long time, but part of the conversation Thursday morning was whether or not there are other avenues for revenue for projects like that, where with demolition, we've got a very limited number of funding sources, and so I think that was also part of the conversation, so, and I guess I'm just bringing this up for going forward, if, you know, according to the article we read in the paper last week, that this federal funding is gonna continue to diminish, we need to be aware of that and finding other ways of doing this going forward, was my only thought.
I had a question, too, because to me, to me, when I first heard about it, I think I received an email about the meeting, but to me, it was more or less the timing. You know, whether it was this block rent money or whatever the budget money we used to do this, we've had Riverview Recreation come up, we've had Riverfront things happening, fences put up, we've had several other parks that have had renovations or improvements to them, but for some reason, it was a couple weeks ago, and I got the article here, Mr. Welper had a problem with grant money that we received from, was it Wellmark Blue Zone, in regards to the blue zone, because he didn't believe that the people in that particular area was actually going to use the equipment and that it was actually a waste of money. Now, we passed all these, all these other parks have gone through, received some type of funnies, funding, some type of allocation from somewhere within the city, we didn't hear about the fact now we wanna use this for demolition. So now Sullivan Park and Gates Park comes up, so there's this antenna that goes up again to stating that we need to take that money and we need to use that money for something else. To me, the problem is not necessarily whether we use this pot, the problem is, for the last two to three years, we have been asking for more money for demolition of houses. The pot has changed, the way we use that money has changed from what, the way it was when I first got on council. Reggie, Reggie had a decent grasp on working with someone to try to get at least $100,000, $150,000 secure. Now that money's, now that money and the pot that it's in is a nuisance pot, and it's expanded further. I just had a spreadsheet the other day, well, today, from, from NOE in regards to the amount of money that we were going to spend and the money that was in that pot, but the thing that is odd to me is we had 900 and something thousand dollars to move the credit union, but now we can't find an additional $68,000 out of city money to tear down more houses. These guys on the Delapidated Housing Committee have done an excellent job. Zellerford, Western, NOE, everyone has done an excellent job, but the fact is that resources are short to be able to do some of those things. So, we had a meeting a while ago in the mayor's office and we talked about it, sent emails out to try to find more money, but the fact of the matter is, we need to have a line item budget amount of money that we allocate for 657A houses. The houses that I saw came up today, I think Willow Street and another street, have sat there, and I'm not saying it's the city's fault, but they have sat there, they have been burned down, and they have been blighted in that community, and there's other properties across the entire city, so I would pose, what means do we have to, I don't know if it's too late to bond money, to be able to do some of these things? I know every year we say we're gonna take money from the general fund, and then that money ends up back, and we're not spending any of that money. What can we do to get some more money to work with some of this blight? That's what I wanna know.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd have to say that Mr. Hart is probably agreeing with me that we need to keep this $68,000 in demolition, so we can do the projects that he's talking about.
Ron, you know what? The only thing I agree with you on is the fact that we need to find funding sources. The problem that they're having is not a problem that's today. This is a problem that's been held from the last several years. There was money allocated to be able to do this from the general fund. If you take away, if you take a look at the way that the nuisance money is being spent, then you'd see that less and less money is going to tearing down houses. That's, that's a change we had over the first years. I mean, you started out talking about the '90s with something, then you started last time when there's a playground equipment up in Ferguson, you asked Harold something about 25 years ago, but the fact of the matter is, there needs to be more money that's placed in there, and by taking money away from a blighted area with already blight that is an eligible use of a community development block grant money, the fact of the matter is, we need to allocate from our budget, in addition to what's already there, more money to deal with this situation. That's the challenge, and that has been asked several times without response, so that's the challenge.
Okay. Ron, do you, would you like to make a motion of some kind to revisit the CDBG authorization?
I don't know if I'm gonna do any good to make a motion, because there's not gonna be support here.
Well, you don't know that until you do, but I don't know how else to address this particular issue, the one, the playground funding versus demolition. I don't know how else to do that.
Mr. Mayor?
Quentin's, just a second. Quentin's impassioned plea for more money, we can address that every single year, and we did this year. We talked in depth at bonding time, how much money we were going to bond. We talked in depth that if we bonded whatever number it was, $800,000 or something, for demolition, and we chose to do the Lafayette School, until we do that, that it's gonna take all of our money. So, you know, council has discretion over CIP money, and you can bond as much as you can get three other people to agree with you for enough to tear down every house that's on every list, if you can get three other council to agree with you on that.
Sure. Again, going back to the mid-'90s, when, when all the requests were important, all of them, but we just couldn't fund them all.
Exactly.
This is, this is why the Community Development Board said that we need to focus just on housing and nothing else, and that's where it's been. And now I see that we're straying off, and I hope we aren't doing that, because we know, we know it's gonna take a great deal of money to knock down Lafayette School, don't wanna take away the chances of knocking down some homes, and I see we might be able to knock down nine homes by not funding the parks through CDBG.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I was just gonna mention that I noticed we do have several members of the CDBG Board here, and I don't know whether or not we'd offer to hear from them, because I know David mentioned Thursday morning being part of that subcommittee that reviewed that before it came to council, which I did before he got on the council, so I have a little bit of an appreciation of that, but they're really, I think, the folks that vetted this, and so I'd offer, offered them if any of them would like to speak, certainly.
Well, other than a timing issue, we might have a couple more minutes, that if any of the CDBG Board members would like to speak to this issue, you're welcome to.
Hate seeing them come down here for nothing.
Morning, council members.
Morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, that too. It's Monday. Eric Johnson with the Community Development Board, been chairman for quite some time. Mr. Welper is correct that we, some time ago, made a decision after talking with the council, and I think probably the only council member here at the time, this could've been 15 years ago, would've been Mr. Getty, the rest of you weren't there, and this was at a point where community development block grant funds were sort of used and sprinkled throughout the community for a whole host of projects. We decided we wanted to focus more on housing. Always the understanding was we would focus more on housing, but not exclusively housing. We have funded other projects other than housing, but a great majority of that goes towards housing, as Mr. Welper has said, but we've done the food bank, we've done a little bit for the Boys and Girls Club with some things over the years, so it's not been exclusively housing, but that's always been the focus. You know, my board, and I actually have a quorum here, which I'm sort of impressed with, my board meets with, meets with the council prior to every funding cycle, and we say, has anything changed? Do you want us to do something different? Because you know what? We're volunteers, and we don't wanna go through this whole process if you guys have changed the direction you want us to go. And we met with you this year, and we have two council representatives who sit with our subcommittee, because ultimately, you're the elected officials, and, Mr. Welper, you're right, there's more requests that come in than we've got money. If, you know, demolition is vital, you know, these parks, I mean, they're, they're a good use of the money, too. You know, we don't, we're not saying which is more important than the other, we're simply saying, you know, the process we filed, we think, was correct. If you didn't understand it, we're sorry, we're trying to keep you in the loop. If you tell us next year, any extra money goes towards demolition, fine. If you tell us this year, fine. It's, you know, it's just sort of a mess that we have to submit all this to the federal government, and to redo it or undo it isn't the easiest thing in the world, but glad to answer any questions you've got about this, and, you know, ultimately, the decision should rest with you, you're elected officials. You get the blame, you get to make the choices, but, you know, that's, that's what I know about this, so glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, Eric. Appreciate it. Mr. Jones?
Just one, one point. Having, you know, sat on that subcommittee and worked through these applications, you know, I thought we were doing it the best job we could in allocating those funds, as we should, but they are called community development block grants, they're not community demolition block grants, and just providing a bunch of empty lots is not community development, so there has to be a balance there, and we did the best job we could to provide that balance.
Okay. I'll ask in favor of Mr. Welper, then, maybe without making a motion, is there any appetite for revisiting that, that funding that has been in place or that has been approved already to redo?
You making a motion? Apparently not.
Yeah, okay. I think it's certainly good conversation. I think one of the areas that, or one of the things that, that we have gotten, short on words, I can't, we do a really good job in Waterloo at tearing down houses. As I talk to other mayors and other council people around the state, we outperform every other city in the state as far as demolishing dilapidated housing, tenfold. Other cities are looking at our program, because they wanna know how in the world we do it, how do we knock down so many houses? So we've gotten ourselves in a position now where every time a dilapidated house comes, appears, which is often, we wanna tear it down, and it's the right thing to do, but in fact, we don't have the money to do all of the houses that we would like to tear down. So, I think at this point, with, with this particular situation, I'm seeing, without a vote being taken, that there's probably not an appetite to revisit the allocations of the CDBG money to parks.
I don't think there's enough, but I know I would like to see more houses come down in parks.
I think...
We all do.
Okay, well, then let me not make that assumption. Would you like to make a motion?
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
And this is, Harold, there's, there are plenty of funding sources that we may be able to use to do this, and my question is, can we revisit what we currently have in our budget, what we're spending, what goes to dilapidated housing, and see if we can put in a mechanism in place where we can make sure that there is a line item, line item, dollar amount that goes directly every year? So, CDBG is going to do what they do, but I want to know from the city, is there an amount that we're going to allocate, a line item that we're going to give? That way, if CDBG cuts us a million dollars, we still have what the city's going to do, because to me, that's where the challenge is at. That's where the challenge was at. That's where the change is at. Our nuisance pot is expanded, but it's expanded for other projects as well, so I wanna know, I would like to have a meeting so that we can take a look at the money that they have allocated, and we can see what we can do as a city to see what other parts, pots are available, or, so, and David had a good point, redevelopment. I've heard people talk about, yeah, it's getting close to time, but I've heard other people talk about the fact that we got all these lots now that need to be mowed, that need to be maintained. What are we going to do to sell some of those lots so we can make some more money so that we can put into this program? But we need to take a look at redevelopment as opposed to just tearing things down. So that's the type of meeting I wanna have, when we look at all sources, because there's opportunity to do it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman?
Just real quickly, I think, you know, what's done is done in this instance. I agree with what Quentin's saying about having a big picture review, but I do think going forward, you know, to talk now about there's other funds out there, well, if there's other funds out there, we should be getting them now, we shouldn't be talking about options, and, and to go back to David's point, I have trouble that the city's far and away the largest landowner in the city, and we can't maintain all of our empty lots, I don't think, to our code level, but for those folks, and they're all over the city, those folks would end up being next to a vacant house. The vacant house has all kinds of opportunities for mischief and misbehaving and nuisance, where a vacant lot is, is not a problem, and that's why, you know, I don't know if we've got the information handy, you know, as we talk about over the last 10 or 15 years, but how many 657As were we doing 10 or 15 years ago? I mean, I'm assuming it was next to none compared to what we're doing now, so I don't think that's a real fair comparison, but if we're, you know, if we're gonna get focused, because as you and I know from getting around all parts of the city, there are empty houses all over this town that, that really need to come down, and we need to focus on that. Right, right, yeah.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, I would, I would ask that we continue this discussion. I think this is very important. We're running out of time today, we're way beyond what we said we would do, but I think that's important enough that we need to do this again.
Okay.
I agree.
Very near future.
But move forward with the allocations as they help.
Well, I, yes, that's, that's fine. I just don't, the important, the, the intent here was not to lose focus on demolishing property.
Motion adjourned.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, return. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Let's go ahead and call this meeting to order, please. It is a little past 5:30. We're running just a little bit late today, not much, this, but welcome, all of you that are here, this Monday, July 15th, to the regularly scheduled Waterloo City Council meeting, and to all of those of you who may be watching us on our public access television. Madam Clerk, would you start us by reading the roll, please?
Yes, Ms. Cole, Mr. Getty.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Mr. Greenwood.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Hart.
Here.
Could all join me, please, in standing for just a moment of silent reflection or prayer. Thank you very much. Our pledge this evening is going to be led by Mr. Larry Smith, our Superintendent of Voice Management Services. Larry, please.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
I would make a motion to approve an amended agenda. There with me, we are going to add a 1A3, and that's a noise variance by Nisa Neal. We're also going to add a number two, a public, public hearings, which is a request to rezon some property along Martin Luther King Jr. Drive in Idaho. The next amendment will be to change, number eight, to change wrong contract amount for that item. Number fourteen would be to change that date of hearing to August 5th. I also want to amend to change the date on the minutes as well, which was reflected for the Housing Authority May 16th meeting. I'm also with the approval of the very amended agenda. I also move that we approve the minutes of July 8th's regular session.
Second. Council, do you have any questions regarding the agenda of the minutes either? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. We have one proclamation tonight, and Mac, McNeil, I think, is here. Mac, if you'll come on up and get to do this. Greetings, sir. How are you?
I'm sure.
Shirt on and everything. Let's turn around here, so that everybody can see us two handsome guys standing up here together. I guess Bob's even going to take a picture of us, so. This is the, the second year that we have got to recognize Promise Keepers coming to the Cedar Valley, and, and it's a big deal. And I know, Mac, you've worked awfully hard in, in getting this event here. So, the, the City of Waterloo is going to recognize Promise Keepers, excuse me, with this proclamation. Excuse me. Whereas, since its founding in 1990, Promise Keepers' mission has been to ignite and unite men to become warriors, to change their world through living out the seven promises. And whereas, Promise Keepers is a Christ-centered organization dedicated to motivating men to keep their promises in the context of their family, church, and community. And whereas, God kept all the promises that He made to mankind, and Promise Keepers comes from that covenant-keeping nature of the Father. And whereas, Promise Keepers encourages men to be transformed and to live godly lives, thereby embracing, excuse me, thereby enhancing the lives of those they come into contact with, including family, friends, coworkers, and neighbors. Now, therefore, I, Buck Clark, Mayor, with this proclamation, do hereby recognize the 2013 Promise Keepers National Conference, July 19th through the 20th, 2013, at the Unidome, Cedar Falls, Iowa. Oh, it's, okay. Correction, Mac whispers in my ear, it's not at the Unidome, it's at the McLeod Center. So, anyway, July 19th through the 20th, which is coming up, Mac, this weekend, as a matter of fact, is the Promise Keepers event. I was fortunate enough to be able to go to it last year, it's a fabulous event. Mac, you guys did a great job putting it on. So, anyway, that's your proclamation. I'm going to give you the microphone and let you say a couple of words.
This started out back in May of 2012. I got with the Visitors Bureau in Cedar Falls and Waterloo, and got the two mayors and the Unidome behind us. And this is what the result of it. We're fortunate this year. If you haven't got a ticket and want to go, you're going to get a real treat Friday night, because the founder is going to be speaking, Coach Bill McCartney.
You bet, Mac. Thank you very much. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you then. I, I'm going to ask, only because it's next on the agenda, but Michelle Timmeyer was supposed to be here for a presentation of the Iowa State University Extension and Outreach regarding the Blackout County Fair. I don't see Michelle here, so she's either running late or got tied up or something. If she shows up, we'll fit it in, but we'll skip that for tonight and move to the consent agenda, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move that we receive, place, on file, and approve the consent agenda, items 1A through B12. Also with the approval of the consent agenda, I move that we approve the bills payment, which will be read by our Finance Vice Chair.
Mr. Mayor, bills payment this week are $3,028,272.22. That's three comma, zero two eight comma, two seven two point two two second.
Very good, council. Do you have any questions or concerns regarding the consent agenda? Madam Clerk, that's a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
I would need to abstain on a payment of $298 Schmidt Telecom on behalf of work done for the city, and other than that, I would say yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Very good. Motion's carried. Item number two, please.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
Item number two, I'd like to make a motion, receive and file proof of publication of notice of public hearing. That's the request by Philip Douglas to rezone approximately 1.3 acres of land located at the southwest corner of Martin Luther King Jr. Drive and Idaho Street from R2, 1 and 2 Family Residence District to CP Plan Commercial Zoning District for the purpose of constructing a 60 by 120-foot commercial building, and instruct the city clerk to publish notice.
Second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries, and the hearing is now open. Madam Clerk, are there any written objections on file?
None.
One in the audience that would like to speak either for or against item number two, rezoning this land. A second time.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion and to close the hearing and file, receive and file the recommendation of, of approval of Planning, Programming, and Zoning Commission.
Second. Council, do you have any questions or concerns? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, an ordinance amending, ordinance number 5079 is amended, City of Waterloo zoning ordinance by amending the official zoning map referred to in Section 10 dash 4 dash 4, approving a rezone on certain property.
Second. And that's a real call, real call. It's a real call vote, Madam Clerk, would you please?
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Very good. The motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to suspend the rules.
Second. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to consider and pass for the second and third times and adopt the ordinance.
Second. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Mr. Welper.
Yes.
Mr. Hart.
Yes.
Mr. Getty.
Yes.
Mr. Jones.
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood.
Yes.
Very good. The motion's carried. Resolutions, please, council, if we could do the first three, three, four, five.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Getty.
Item three is a resolution sitting data hearing for August 5th, 2013, to approve request by Garrett Gingrich to vacate an eight-foot wide platted utility easement at the northwest corner of Mount Vernon Drive and Meadow Lane in Westridge 2nd Edition, and instruct the city clerk to publish that notice. Item four was his resolution approving the award of bid to ultra-max ammunition of Cedar City, excuse me, of Rapid City, South Dakota, in the amount not to exceed $36,500 for the police department FY214 ammunition needs. And item five is a resolution approving the Fifth Amendment to the Development Agreement between the City of Waterloo and Mako Waterloo Corporation for the restoration and rehabilitation of Rapid Administration Building located at 515 Sycamore Street. I move that these motions be approved.
Second. Very good. Council, do you have any questions regarding three, four, and five?
However, Mr. Mayor, yes, go ahead.
I have a question with number five. This is the Fifth Amendment for this project, and we had a discussion about demolition a little bit earlier. Is there a clause attached to this, because we know that the prices may have gone up? Is there a clause attached to this, that if they don't get the project, or get the tax credits, or don't complete this by September 2014, can they demolish it, since at one point, I believe, we did have some federal money to do that? Maybe, did we? Did we not?
Paul, please.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, I'm not aware that we ever had any federal money to actually demolish this. I know we were, we were focusing on trying to get some EDI money at one point, but...
Five hundred thousand dollars?
But I don't think we ever were awarded that EDI money for the demolition of this. I could be wrong, but it's never come to light, I guess, for quite some time. The Fifth Amendment with Mako, obviously, we're hopeful that they can go ahead and, and move ahead with this. They have been working with the historic tax credits with the state for some high-quality job creation program, tax credits as well, with some businesses potentially going in there. So, we're hopeful this will go ahead. The First Amendment was due to us taking out the asbestos, that was the year they, they froze some water pipes, but the, the next amendments are all due to them, taking a little bit longer. I know that the company did fire their original architect for some, for some problems with the historic rehabilitation program. They've got a new architect, they've met with the building staff. We feel pretty confident they're moving ahead, at least at this point.
So, so, the, the credits, they have the credits now, they have everything they need. They have all the stuff they didn't have during the Fourth Amendment.
Correct.
And they have all those things.
They, they actually had some of those during the Fourth Amendment, but they had to go through the process to actually get full approval, to get the tax credits approved, the building design and rehabilitation approved, and they should have all that now.
Noel, do they have, do they have a deadline when this should be done?
We would be extending it to September of 2014 with this approval. That would be their new deadline.
For another year yet.
Correct.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
And Noel, just to clarify, we talked about this Thursday morning, but part of this extension is that they will secure the building, correct?
Correct.
Because it had been secured, no longer is.
Had been, it's been kind of unsecured. They had to take some of those off to look at the building, to look at the windows for measurements for the historic tax credits and all that. They didn't put all the securing, fastening things back up. They, they should be doing that again pretty soon here.
Got you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I just really feel that to give these people another year, to let that building sit there is, is way too long. They've known about it now for several years, and, and I just don't agree with them asking for an extension for another year.
Okay.
They catch twenty...
Go ahead.
The catch 22 is now we're in a position where if we get the building back, we probably won't be able to tear it down for another five, 10 years. So, things were probably a little bit cheaper six, seven years ago, possibly. And I did think we had grant money at that time. Would they be in favor to some type of percentage off demolition if they don't tear down the building, instead of us taking the entire load ourselves?
I don't know. But I, I just think that, that they've had long enough, and we can apply for some grants to do it ourselves, and, and see what happens. I just, I don't know, they've just been wasting a lot of time, as far as I'm concerned, with that building.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Getty and Mr. Schmidt.
It, but, and I, I understand what Councilman Getty is saying, and I certainly empathize with another day gone by and the wheel hasn't turned. However, you know, that whole area has improved dramatically since this conversation started, and hopefully, because while these folks have it, if Pick a Name wanted to come in and do something with that building, are they precluded from doing that, or could they negotiate with these folks? Because what I'm wondering is, you know, you, you see on the news all the time, the Millwork is the one that catches my attention and debuke, that that whole area now is starting to take off. And, you know, it seems like we're close to that in that neighborhood, because once that building's gone, it's gone. And it's not like we've got anybody else right now waiting in the wings to take it over. I mean, it's either these guys do it, or it's, it's history, if we could figure out how to demolish it. But Noel, so does this precl... I'm sorry, I asked you a question, I didn't get let you talk. Would this allow somebody else to come in and do something?
I mean, obviously, this developer's willing to work with people that want to be tenants in there, and, and they would work to finish up the leasehold space at the same time. If someone else wanted to come along and buy this building from them and do the same project, I think we'd have to approve that through council, because it'd be a new company in the development agreement. At the same time, if they were to fix up this building and meet all the requirements of what the city has put in the development agreement, and then sell it to somebody else, the, the development agreement is transferable from that standpoint. So, they've got a lot of options, but all of them require them to fix up the building as per the development agreement.
Thank you.
I think, haven't we seen, Noel, from this developer, increased activity, though, of late, where, you know, with the recession four or five years ago, when everything stopped, this particular developer stopped, and he has now began to become active again?
I, I know that, you know, he had another building in the Sioux City area, dealing with the historic tax credits. They had 85 different window sizes that they're dealing with there, which is what they were unhappy with, with that previous architect, so they're trying to refine that and make this more economically feasible, fixing this one up. We have definitely seen a lot more paperwork from him and talking with state staff. They're going through a lot of steps. I mean, if they're not planning on rehabilitating this, this building, they're doing a lot of paperwork for, for naught.
Okay, very good.
Are they, is our staff aware that there's some plywood off of the windows down there now that need to be put back on?
They are aware of that, yes.
They are?
All right.
One more question. So, we cannot ensure that we're not left holding the bag on this one? At least a percentage, 50%, can they put towards?
I mean, we'd, we'd have to go back to the company and, and speak with them about that. I don't know what their thoughts.
Require a new development agreement?
Yeah.
Amendment to the development agreement.
It, if, it's, are you making that request?
Yeah, let's see if there's some council interest in protecting our interest.
Okay. Noel, would you speak to the developer and, and see if we can get a feel whether he would be willing to do that? Do you want an answer before you vote? Councilman Hart?
I just trust that, trust that we lose our leverage.
Well, there's a motion and a second on the resolution, on all three resolutions. Let's see where we go with this. It's a roll call vote on three, four, and five. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, could I, could I just ask one more question? I'm sorry. My understanding from looking at our community development packet is the historic tax credits that we applied for, for some of the other developments downtown, did not make the cut. Is that correct, Noel?
I, I haven't seen anything about the historic tax credits from the state. Are you talking about the...
I'm talking about Sherman, JSA.
CDBG multifamily.
Right.
Correct. Neither the Sherman nor the JSA were awarded any funds.
Okay. So, what you were, and, and the reason I brought that up, is what you were just mentioning about these folks. Did you say they have been approved for all the...
They do have the tax, the historic tax. They do have the tax, the historic tax credits.
Everything that is available, so then really, what they're waiting on is just some folks to step up and say, "I want some office space," 'cause this is supposed to be office space, correct?
Let me, let me throw in here that historic tax credits, and this may have been their problem before, they expire, uh, so the fact that you have them at one time doesn't mean you have them forever, there's a certain amount of time you have to do your project, and if you don't do it, then they go away. So, it could be that the business side of this didn't coincide with the, uh, tax credit side of it, I'm not sure where they're at now, but, uh, in the tax credit system, we have, and Iowa is a lottery, so even though you've applied for it and done everything you can, you may not get the tax credits, and the governor did veto $20 million that the legislature had appropriated for extra tax credits this year, so we're back to what we've had for the last five years. So, I don't know where they're at, but I wouldn't be surprised if these folks were back saying they can't do the project, and if they, unless they've got everything lined up, 'cause this is a business opportunity, and it's dependent on, uh, a high-technology business that changes daily.
Right.
And answer to the other question about demolition, I can't imagine they'd ever come back and demolish this building if they have to walk away from the project.
Thank you.
We'd be stuck.
Well, it's counsel's pleasure, uh, there is a motion and a second on three, four, and five, we can deal with those, I would accept a motion regarding five if you want to table that or do something else with it also.
And Noel, are they out of state, or out of, they're from Sioux City, have they been here in a while?
Their architect was just here.
Come to the microphone, Mr. Anderson, please.
Their architect was just here, meeting with building staff, uh, I think a week and a half ago.
So, i- is there some indication that they're going forward with this, then, please?
Rough, Craig Clark, building official, roughly about a year ago, they took out a permit to secure the property, fence it, board up the windows, put a new roof on it. The architect that they hired to drew those plans is no longer hired, so the new architect was out here a couple of weeks ago, they have renewed that building permit and want to move forward with that, um, part of the project. I believe the value is roughly about $400,000 or $500,000. They, the, there's still some window issues, I believe, going on, they have, um, drawings produced, um, for the shell of the building, I would say, and the architect has been hired to, um, produce a shell, white shell.
White boxed?
Yep.
So, they're spending money on this project?
Yeah, they, they have plans produced, um, with a white shell, so I would expect they've spent quite some money on this.
But I mean, they're spending money on fees and on architect fees and building permits and things like that?
Yep.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
And Craig, it says on the development agreement that the building permit to begin the improvement needs to be taken out no later than 100 days, 180 days after approval, so they already taken that out?
They have taken out one permit, it's not for the whole project, it was just to, they considered it to secure the property. It's fencing and, um, you know, boarding up those windows and making the roof so it doesn't leak.
So, we can take a look at about six, six months to see if some of these things have been done?
Correct.
Okay.
And they would have 180 days for that building permit, and after that, it'll expire again.
Good questions. Are we done, do we have further comments, counsel? Questions? All right, it is a roll call vote on all three, three, four, and five, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, counsel, good comments, six, seven, and eight, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Hurt?
Move to adopt a resolution approving a change order to the previous property exchange agreement with the Northeast Iowa Food Bank, Inc., to reflect an additional $6,419.88 in demolition costs at the site for new construction, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign and fully execute any necessary documents. Seven, I move to adopt a resolution approving professional services agreement in the amount of $10,000 with Howard R. Green, Inc. of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, for the Chamberlain Phase III demolition for additional services, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign and fully execute any necessary documents. Number eight, I move to adopt a resolution approving the Van De Waal and Associates proposed scope of work agreement in the amount of $72,000. Four, implementation of services for 2014 through 2015 for the City of Waterloo, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign for and fully execute any necessary documents.
Second.
Very good, thank you, Councilman Hart. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments regarding six, seven, or eight? Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Mayor? Uh, item number eight, is, is we talk about that primarily the downtown redevelopment, do we have kind of an end game or an end date in mind? 'Cause I don't, and, you know, I'm, I was being serious when I asked that, I saw your smile, but, yeah.
Well, it's, it, and it, and, uh, no. There isn't, as long as we're moving forward productively and positively, Mr. Schmidt, I, I don't think that we can say that we'll be done with that in two years, or five years, or 10 years. I, I think that there will become, there will come a time when it becomes apparent that, that Van De Waal is not contributing as much to the overall plan as maybe they have in the past. Uh, I will tell you, I had those questions, I had those questions when I was on council, I had those questions when I ran for mayor, with, fully intending really kind of ferreting that out, and, uh, I have come to learn that they are a tremendous value to us, and, and they add a lot to our overall development, and without them keeping us focused and keeping us on track, uh, I, I think we'd flounder terribly. So, uh, I, I think it's, it's, uh, it, it's certainly one that should be questioned routinely, but at this point, I certainly think that it's worthwhile.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Madam Clerk, please, on six, seven, and eight.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Very good, thank you, counsel, nine, 10, and 11, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Walper?
Number nine is a resolution approving the release of a real estate mortgage for certain mortgage dated October 15, 1985, with the National Cattle Congress in the City of Waterloo, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to sign, fully execute any necessary documents. Number 10 is a resolution approving an award of bid of Kirk Gross Company of Waterloo, Iowa, in the amount of $87,787.99 for the purchase of Cedar Valley Sports Plex Furnishings. Number 11 is a resolution approving the award of bid to Landmark Turf Services of Duckerton, Iowa, in the amount of $25,175 for the fiscal year 2014 flood control system tree removal.
Second.
Very good, counsel, questions on nine, 10, or 11?
Mr. Mayor, on number nine?
Yes, sir.
What property was that?
Noel, could you explain what that is, please?
Noel Anderson, Community Planning and Development Director, so when I was in eighth grade, the city, uh... gave some money to the cattle congress, um, that was paid back in 1996, um, by the cattle congress, for some reason, uh, the, uh, release was never fully recorded and all that, so we're taking that action now for the cattle congress.
Okay, so, everything's on the level, level now?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Noel. Have you learned anything since the eighth grade? Anything else, counsel?
Can we vote on his education?
Let's don't.
No?
Let's don't. Madam Clerk, nine, 10, and 11, please.
Mr. Getty?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Greenwood?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Walper?
Yes.
Mr. Hurt?
Yes.
Very good, thanks, motion carries, 12 and 13, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schmidt?
Item number 12 is a motion approving change order number one for a net decrease of $34,200 for work performed by Veeth Construction Corporation of Cedar Rapids, Iowa, uh, for the fiscal year 2012 Chamberlain Demolition Phase III, contract number 806. And item number 13 is a motion to receive and file and place on file the 2012 operating report of the Waterloo Water Works.
Second.
Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries on 12 and 13. Item 14, please.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. G. Green?
Make that motion instruct the community planning and development director to prepare plan specification, form a contract, et cetera, that's for a request for proposals for demolition and site clearance services of RACM, that's regulated asbestos-containing material for 710 Willow and 115 Smith Streets.
Second.
I, I believe, aren't those the same, uh, could, could you, could you do 15 along with that, Bob, it's same, same thing, just read the same, uh...
Okay, and then on 15, a motion instruct the committee planning and development director to prepare plan specs, form a contract, that's also for request to propose demolition site clearance services, regulated asbestos-containing materials for the former Lafayette School located at 2265 Lafayette Street.
Very good.
Second to that, too.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt, uh, counsel, do you have any questions regarding either one of those demolition requests, 14 or 15?
Just, if I could just ask, so, can we get a, a guesstimate on the timeframe for Lafayette? I mean, I, I know we're gonna have the hearing opening, uh, August the 12th, but, so would we anticipate if, if the bid's come back, uh, within our bounds, uh, you know, are we thinking that would come down yet this year, or would that be next spring, or, what's, what's your best guess on that?
Um, no, it, it actually should be a very good winter project. Um, yeah, if we get them back in August, they should be able to begin work shortly thereafter, there's a 10-day DNR notice, but otherwise, they'd have the ability, depending upon the weather, to start in the wintertime, work over the wintertime, depending upon, again, the weather and their schedule, but, uh, it should be down by the spring, hopefully.
How long of a project is that, Noel?
Um, I don't know. It's a good question, I mean, it's a multi-story building, so it's gonna depend a little bit